October 20th, 2022 Board of Education meeting. At this time, I would like to call our meeting to order and I would like to ask Mr. Juan Craft to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you. So I'm reading from a blog from Amy Weatherly. She is an author and blogger. I think one of the hardest things, at least for me, is to allow someone to have a bad opinion of me. I want to defend myself. I want to explain why they're wrong. I want to convince them that I'm a decent person and I'm worth liking. I don't want my reputation left in their hands because their hands are fickle. But the truth is, the very, very hard to swallow truth is that I'm not in control of their opinions about me. I'm not in control of the view they have of me, the light they choose to see me through, and unfortunately, even what they say about me to others. Peace is letting go. Peace is accepting that they're entitled to their feelings about me. They have every right not to like me. They have every right to not choose me, to not invite me, or to label me as the villain, the bad guy, or whatever else they want. They don't have to forgive me, give me grace, or even attempt to understand my point of view. But at the end of the day, the thing is, my reputation is who they think I am, whatever version of me they have created in their mind. It may be about me, it may involve me, but it's not really mine to hold. My character, however, is who I actually am. My character belongs to me and me alone, and I take it seriously. So I guess they can have their perceptions and they can have their own ideas about who I am and why I do what I do. I release their opinions about me, but I hold tight to my peace. We all have to take responsibility for the words we write. That's on us. But we don't have to exhaust ourselves trying to be responsible for the way people choose to read them. That's on them. Thank you.
I love that. Thank you. All right, we have the pleasure of having Angela Ferris from Central Elementary School, our principal, and some of her wonderful students. They're going to be in our student spotlight tonight. Welcome. Glad you're here. And if you'd like to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, that's ready.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. If you want to remain standing, tonight we're highlighting some of your different events and things that you've been doing at Central Elementary. We'd love to hear about them.
First of all, thank you so much for having us. We're beyond excited. We have lots of good things to share tonight, and I have my central Eagles here to help me, so I'm really, really, really excited about this. So first, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Newper. She's our curriculum coach, and she has led this initiative, so I would love for her to explain it. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to say it again, or am I okay?
I could hear you. I don't know if everybody in the audience could you hear okay.
All right. So Stephanie Newper, she's our curriculum coach, and she has led this initiative, so I am very, very proud of her and proud of all of these young students, so.
Stephanie? If it's okay, I'm going to have them sit just for a moment, and then they'll come back at the end and explain how this is impacting them.
Thank you.
You can hear better now. Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Newper, and I'm the instructional coach at Central Elementary School. At Central Elementary, we are currently involved in a program called Read Marathon. So the goal of Read Marathon is for participating students, which they call Read Runners, to build their reading stamina while reading over the course of 26.2, 26 and two tenths days. There is an option for three races this year, so they can run a 10K, which has a finish line of 400 reading minutes, the half marathon, which has a finish line of 800 minutes, and the marathon, which has a finish line of reading 1,600 minutes. The starting line started on October 11th, and they will continue to read for their Read Marathon until November 6th. Students who meet their goals will earn a finisher certificate for crossing the finish line. One of the really cool parts about the Read Marathon program is that it comes with different resources and things for the students to use. So this is an example of just one of the emails that was sent out to us, where they can download books, and they can download the books in English and Spanish, so it also helps to support our English language learners. And all that's free with the program. All right, so at Central Elementary School, kindergarten and first grade students are participating in the 10K, which was the 400 minutes. Second and third grade students are participating in the half marathon, which is 800 minutes, and then our fourth and fifth graders are participating in the marathon, which was the 1,600 minutes. Students can read at home, they can read at school, they can read on the go, they can read as little or as much as they want. They're logging their reading minutes on a reading log, which I'm going to show you in a little bit, and then they're turning them in on a weekly basis, so we're logging them each week into the online database. You're going to see examples of those. The focus of Read Marathon is to build reading stamina, but at CES, we're also incorporating math standards into this initiative. So on the following slides, we're going to look at each grade level's graphing standards and how we're displaying the data as well, because in addition to class graphs, each student has received an individual graph that their classroom teacher is able to use in their classroom to support these math standards as well. Okay, so kindergarten is using a pictograph. This is an example of their class graph, and then on the left side, their individual student graphs. So we're using this to support their standard of skip counting by 10, so each little book is worth 10. And I will say, they blew me out of the water with their reading minutes. And so for our class graph, I actually had to make every book 1,000 minutes because it was going to be way too many books on their poster, but their class graphs still are skip counting by 10, their individual graphs. Hi, first grade is using a tally chart to reinforce their standards. They also blew me away because after week one, I had to do 2,202 tallies, so I had to rethink that a little bit also. Second grade chose to use a bar graph. What I did at the beginning of this was email each of the teachers and say, based on your math standard, you can choose this, this, or this, and they let me know which one would best support their classroom. So second grade chose the bar graph. Third grade also chose a bar graph. Fourth grade also chose a bar graph. And then the fifth grade standard is line graphs, which show changes over time. So fifth grade is going to be showing their reading minutes and how they change each week throughout the month. These are examples of the student logs, so they can take these home with them, they can fill them out in home, they can fill them out in their classroom, they can use their read aloud, they can use their read to self, they can use it during all those things that they're already doing, and then if they want to take it home and read at home with mom or dad or whoever is at home with them, then they're able to log those minutes as well. So this is just some examples of the student logs that they've turned in. Week one was a success. We are creating, this is a school bar graph, just to show how many hours we're reading as a school. In week one, they read 14,810 minutes. This is some examples of some of the graphs that are in our hallway. So we have the pictographs, we have the tallies, we have the bar graphs, and it's in the center hallway of our building, so as the students go to lunch or the library, they see, and they can see each class. These are some readers from Ms. Schubert's kindergarten class. This is Shiloh Morgan, she's in first grade. This is her reading from home. This is Ms. Locker's second grade class reading. And this is Ms. Pritchett's first grade class. They're reading with a partner. I'm here to speak with you tonight. We have four of our Eagle leaders. We have Rep. Forehand, who is in kindergarten. Woo! We have Lily Morgan, who's in third grade. Woo! We have Sophia Sianco in fourth grade. Also Shayla Darden, who is also in fourth grade, and they're just going to talk to you a little bit. They're going to talk to you a little bit about their experience with Read Marathon.
Okay. Hello, don't be shy.
Want to bend that down a little bit, Sophie? Yeah. Okay. Want to go first? It's this way. Ms. Lily will go first.
Hi, my name is Lily Morgan, and I'm a third grade student in Mrs. Davis's class at Central Elementary. I'm excited for our school's Read Marathon because I really enjoy reading, and let's be honest, who doesn't love a little friendly competition?
Oh, my goodness.
Fiction books and mystery books are my favorite. Are my favorites. Mrs. Davis gives us the opportunity to read in class, and I also read at home. I'm excited to see who is going to read Central Elementary's Read Marathon. Thank you for your time.
Wow.
Hello, my name is Sophia Sianco, and my name is Shayla Darden, and we are in fourth grade in Ms. Schubert's class. The fourth grade's so excited because this year, our school is participating in the Read-a-thon. The Read-a-thon is a fun way kids can build their reading stamina and compete against other classes. The class that has the most reading minutes wins a prize.
All right.
My name is Fred, and I got a special book for I can read.
Wow, that's cool.
Look at the bell. Look at the house. Look at the ladder. Look at the fire truck. Look at the fire dog.
Wow, that's awesome. Good job, buddy. Well, I tell you what, y'all are amazing. What a great job you did tonight.
Thank you. You can tell why we're so proud of them.
I can.
It's been a great, a great initiative. I can't tell you, walking down the hallways and seeing all the graphs and all the kids get excited about it. I invite you all, please stop by. It is wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't entice the competition piece, that came from them.
Yes.
But it's, it's working, and it's amazing.
A little competition's good.
Right.
If I may ask, each student, if you would come back up, state your name one more time and think of your favorite all-time book. What would that be? If you had to name one book that you really enjoyed, which one would it be?
Hi, my name is Lily Morgan, and my favorite book would probably be The Great Treehouse War, one of the Battle of the Books books.
Ooh, good choice, good choice. All right.
Hello, my name's Sophia Sianco, and my favorite book is Crenshaw, one of the Battle of the Books books.
What's the name of it again?
Crenshaw.
Okay, good, good job.
My name is Shayla Darden, and my favorite book is Front Desk, one of the Battle of the Books books.
All right, thank you. How about you, buddy? One more time.
My name is Fred, and my favorite book is the, um, the firefighter book.
Okay.
So I have a question. The girls that said that the books, their favorite books were the Battle of the Books books, are y'all on the team?
Yes.
Okay, exciting. I'll be looking forward to seeing you in April.
Next year, maybe. Next year, that's your goal? Okay. Hey, what's the prize? What do you win? Anybody know? Ice cream or a million dollars?
They're going to get their runner certificate if they finish the race, and then, I was actually brainstorming with Ms. Morgan today, we're talking about maybe some popsicles?
Ooh, okay, popsicles work. All right. Well, thank you again for being here, and y'all did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, everyone. And we know you have school tomorrow, so get some rest. All right, thank you. We're going to have our student board member reports, and on the video, y'all may have seen that Daniel and Albert are still on the video. They graduated, and they're in college now, but we're going to update that video and have our new student, student board members. Let's start off with Sophia.
Thank you. Okay, so the first report is for Central Elementary School. We have had a busy month full of activities. We had a very exciting fall festival and had enormous turnout. Families came and enjoyed pumpkins, food, games, art, face painting, inflatable slides, and fellowship. It was a blast. Each classroom decorated doors with their favorite story, and parents voted during the festival. Winners will receive a prize for their efforts. Central is also participating in a program called Read Marathon that helps students work on reading stamina. Students track the amount of time they read over a 26-day course. Classrooms compete against each other and race towards the finish line to see who has read the most. Students receive prizes as they go and rewards for all their hard work. Red Ribbon Week is next week, along with our Favorite Character Day Parade. We can hardly wait to celebrate. Currits County High School. Congratulations to the CCHS marching band on a magnificent, magnificent performance at the band competition this past weekend. We won third overall with first overall in individual music and color guards, second overall percussion and drum major, third overall visual performance and general effect, and best pick crew. Mr. Buchyard and Ms. Hamlin's class attended the annual COA Advanced Manufacturing Event this year on Friday, October 27th, 2022. This event is held for regional high school students who are interested in learning more about machining, aviation, HVAC, information technology, drafting and design, and engineering. This week is Free College Application Week in North Carolina with participating schools. Students at CCHS took advantage of this by meeting with counselors in the library to help finalize any application or answer questions. Thank you to the school guidance team for making the extra effort to support our students. Currits County Middle School. Today, the CCMS soccer team will be heading to Camden to play First Flight Middle School in the conference championship. We wish them luck. Next week kicks off Spirit Week at CCMS. The students at CCMS have the opportunity to see the Beautiful Tomorrow program this week, teaching them about accomplishing their dreams and supporting others in a positive way. One Book, One School for the month of October, Greig's Elementary. Teachers are reading The Worst Witch in kindergarten and second grade, and The Witches in third grade through fifth grade, to all students wearing their witches hats. Administration and other staff are going into classrooms to read also. Next Thursday, October 27th, at our Fall Family Festival, all teachers will wear their witches hats and pass out treats to our students. On Friday, October 28th, we will celebrate our students' behaviors with a PBIS Day with engaging instructional activities that include both books. October 27th, Fall Family Festival. Teachers have decorated their doors, and every classroom has decorated a pumpkin. Parents will vote on the best pumpkins and best doors at the event. Families will enjoy free pizza, games, book fair, and a haunted hallway. Jarvisburg Elementary School. Jarvisburg Elementary School will be celebrating Red Ribbon Week next week with different themed days and have a visit from the Currits Sheriff's Department for our fourth and fifth grade students. We hosted a PTA open house event that was well-attended and boosted our membership. Halloween hallway wars are underway. Students and staff are competing for the best hallway for theme and decor. Lastly, book fair will be the week of October 24th.
Thank you, Sophia. First, I'm going to start off with JPNAP Early College. Our theme at JPK this year is, this is our story to tell, and our story has plenty of intriguing twists and turns. First, JPK would like to welcome Christian Lowe as our new assistant principal. Christina Bowyer is now working at the district level as the communication slash community liaison. We wish Ms. Bowyer all the best in this new role. All JPK 11th grade students took the PSAT on October 12th, and 10th graders took the pre-ACT on October 19th. We look forward to follow-up work with students in academic seminar when those scores come in. Lastly, next week, October 24th through the 28th, JPK SGO will host Spirit Week. This year's theme is "We're Falling" for JPK, with spirit activities planned for each day and a spirit assembly on Friday. Next is Knott's Island Elementary School. Knott's Island Elementary will be celebrating Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon Week next week with special themes for each day. Next Monday is Dress for Success and is also our Fall Picture Day. We have also initiated a whole school reading challenge for our students to read one book every day all the way up to Christmas break. The students keep track of their progress on their tracking chart. Those who complete the challenge will be treated to a pajama day, complete with a movie and hot chocolate afternoon celebration. And finally, our PTA will be hosting our Community Fall Festival on Friday, October 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be food trucks, games, a family pumpkin patch, cake walks, and a spooky hay ride. All next week, there will be a penny war between classrooms with the winning, with the winning class getting to squirt Mr. Groins, who will be dressed up like a hot dog with mustard and ketchup. We hope the community of Knott's Island will come out and enjoy the festivities. Next is Moyoc Elementary School. The Currits community is invited to the MES Fall Festival being held tomorrow, Friday, October 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. MES plans to have a petting zoo, trick-or-treating, pumpkin patch, art decoration, and the last night of the book fair, a haunted house, and more. Next week, MES is looking forward to even more fun as it's Red Ribbon Week. Keep an eye out for different students' themes each day, ending with Character Day next Friday, 10/28. Moyoc Middle School. Moyoc Middle School is excited to share that the golf trophy is back home as our golf team placed first in its conference. Students in our music courses have moved to their new locations with the opening of our new band and choir rooms. The rooms are specifically designed for music instruction, and they are painted in bulldog colors. We celebrated National Bullying Prevention and Drug-Free Month with a Spirit Week centered around healthy choices. On October 19th, students wore orange and participated in a poetry jam to celebrate National Unity Day. This Friday is our Fall Dance, the Moyoc Monster Mash. We are looking forward to having a fun evening. Shawboro Elementary School. Shawboro has a great start to the school year. There has been a heavy focus on purposeful instruction happening within our building. This Friday, this Friday is our second annual trunk-or-treat event for Shawboro students. We can't wait to see all the costumes and hand out tons of candy. Next week, SES looks forward to activities for Red Ribbon Week. We have daily spirit day competitions, and we have partnered with the community to bring activities into the building.
All right, well, thank you both very much. It's nice to have you here with us. All right, next, we have our public comment session. The public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the board, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up and will be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. We had one person sign up tonight, and that's someone that is well-known within the community. Denise Fallon, if you would come forward.
Thank you. And I am going to talk about somebody identifiable, someone to break the rules straight out of the gate. I just wanted to take a few moments here publicly to thank Ms. Christina Bowyer for all the work she's done at JPNAP Early College. She is, she was one of our founding members at JPNAP. She's worked really hard with the staff over the years to develop a program where students can really enroll, enlist, employ, and, and sometimes for students, that means an associate in arts or associate in science, but we also have students that complete those certifications. She's been a critical member of the staff from the classroom to the AP role, and I just want to thank her for everything that she's done for me personally, as the principal and the assistant principal at JPNAP, but for our students as well. So big round of applause for Ms. Bowyer.
Yeah.
And I invite everybody out to our Spirit Week next week. We're decorating campus for fall, and it's, we're going to have a fun time, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fallon, Ms. Bowyer, thank you. Thank you for your years of dedication and hard work at JPNAP. It shows, and congratulations on your new role. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a first and second, any discussion. The agenda is approved. Dr. Matt Lutz is going to bring us an update concerning our student enrollment.
Our enrollment for both the month of September and October is relatively held steady. With our preschoolers included, we have 4,532 students as of Monday in our schools. Put that in perspective, in September 2018, we had 400 less students. Over the course of four years, we've added 400 students over that time period, and we expect more to come, which leads us right into our construction update. Excited about the, we changed our format up. Thank you, Ms. Fallon, for changing this up, and Matt for getting great pictures, and we're going to actually see some real progress over the past month in our, in our new school building. Moyoc Elementary, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing is progressing on time, along with our interior metal framing, and fireproofing is being applied to the first-floor structure. You can see that's a two-story building, the old brick building is the back of the cafeteria. A lot of progress from September to October. We have continued to be extremely pleased with Sussex, with their quality of work and also their timeliness. In October, again, great progress being made. That will be the entrance to the updated Moyoc Elementary School. It's going to be beautiful. Some, some of the interior pictures. Moyoc Middle School, again, this is the, of the two projects, this is the easier of the two projects. Thing that holds up, holds us up most in this project is actually supplies, making sure it's everything from door handles to the hardware and so on, have given us a few issues. September and October, that is insulation on the outside. This is an exciting piece to add in. So in partnership with Sussex and working with our AIG students, they actually got to spend some time today with Jim Fashon, he's the project lead for Sussex on the project, and Angie Easterday. She is the lead architect with Boomerang Design and a real pleasure to work with. She met virtually with our AIG students today for a Q&amp;A session, and as I pointed out in our work session, I think what a great opportunity in the STEM field to, to have a female architect leading this work and being a great role model there in, in the field of STEM. We're going to continue to have this ongoing throughout the building and the projects, and we're going to make sure those updates are, and access is given to our students. Excited to update the Tulsa Creek site project. We got a tremendous amount of feedback, along with Angie, who I just mentioned, the architect, and Mrs. Dowdy. We met with a variety of stakeholders in our building, including our principals, classroom teachers, PE teachers, music, art, our exceptional children's department, guidance, to make sure that as we progress throughout this project, that when this school is being built and the classrooms are being set up, that the needs of our students are met, along with our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz.
You're welcome.
Great progress, exciting times. Great progress, exciting times.
Can I have a question, Dr. Lutz? With these meetings, when you have all the stakeholders come together, are these going to be monthly, like every few months?
Really, the architects have the lead on this, so they're getting the feedback to design the scope of the building and what that looks like, and then present that work.
I just didn't know if perhaps maybe we could invite a parent, maybe the PTA president or something like that, just maybe to at least give some comments. Like, we discussed in our work session today about parking. I mean, I'm sure that would be a parent, even though we discussed it, I'm sure a parent would probably think of that. I just didn't know if maybe that could be something we could do just as an invitational thing.
I will mention that to Sussex.
Okay.
And see what we can do.
Or even just to have them, you know, send in some questions and have, you know, you or Ms. Dowdy or somebody read them. I just, you know, think about stakeholders.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Lutz. Susan Mazel, our chief financial, chief finance officer, is going to bring us a budget update and our amendments.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. This evening, I have budget amendments for your approval. So, we'll start with the first one in your packet is the State Public School Fund. That's budget amendment number two for the state. We have a decrease here of $1,825,077. We took in school technology interest payment. We had a partial school connectivity allotment. We brought in a reading initiative grant, and we had an adjustment to children with special needs budget. The next one in your packet is the local current expense fund. This is budget number two. We had an increase here of $50,000, and that was the result of fines and forfeitures that we applied to the general operations budget. The next budget amendment is for federal. This is budget amendment number two. We had an increase here of $2,569,518.33. We brought in money for CTE program improvement, IDEA preschool, IDEA 6B handicap, GEAR supplemental instructional service, SRR2, SRR2, excuse me, SRR3 homeless 2, SRR3 summer career accelerator, and SRR3 math enrichment program. All of the SRR funds were actually carryover dollars. The next one in the packet is capital outlay. This is budget amendment number three for capital outlay. We had an increase of $1,082.33. That was the result of the sale of some old technology equipment. And the last budget amendment in your packet is for other local expenditures. This is budget amendment number two for other local. We increased here $213,431.41. This is the result of COVID testing grant carryover. We received a donation for school supplies. We had a sale of computers for the CTE department from the technology department. We brought in Medicaid fee for service reimbursement, and we also put on budget for JROTC and the Albemarle Regional Health Grant. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes, I have a couple, Susan.
Okay.
Why was instructional services with the state and instructional services with the local, one was reduced almost $2 million, and the other $472,000?
So, the one for state was actually a timing issue with budget, with the budget amendment. So, when I do the budget amendments, I cut them off at the end of a month, and I had two of them that were keyed in the next month. So, it really was a correction, which would be reversing out something that happened, which would have been on last month's budget amendment, but it crossed over. So, that's why that one looks the way it does. And local was your other question?
No.
No.
It was stayed in, yeah.
Stayed in local.
What was the other two, excuse me?
So, we were, when you're doing the budget amendments, not only do you have to match it to the total dollars, but you have to match it, line it up with the 500, 600, 7000, excuse me. So, as we're doing the budget and seeing where we're shaking out with personnel and that kind of thing, you have to move between the 500s, the 500s, excuse me, the 5000s and the 6000s. So, we had more sitting in the 5000s than we needed, so we moved it out of there and into the 6000s.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Budget amendments are approved. Field trip request, Dr. Lutz?
I would beg to, under the direction of Ms. Anita Rubino, our cross-country coach, who's done an outstanding job with our runners this year. Before I get to these, they, we won the cross-country championship this year in the conference. That was official today, with a number of runners placing as all-conference.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Part of that is the work that Ms. Rubino puts in along with her team. Two trips that she took on here, one to Cary and then one to Kearnsville. The one in Kearnsville, I want to note, is the state course, and so she took the effort to drive, it's almost five hours away.
Oh, wow.
So, they can run that course before they get to the state championship.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? The consent agenda is approved. Information items, if everybody would keep November 17th on your calendar, that's our work session, starting at 4:00 p.m. that afternoon. And then, after that, we will have our regular meeting at 6:30 here at the courthouse, and that'll be November 17th. Board member and superintendent comments. Dr. Dobney, would you like to start us off?
Sure. This last month, I visited Creituck Middle and Griggs and saw a lot of quality instruction going on at both places. And I was noticing in the introduction to our school board that there was a picture of me with Hunter, our drug dog, and I know that he's been retired recently, and I think we ought to put it on the next board agenda, you know, after talking with Matt Biker, if you would, and see if we need another drug dog, or if we can get another one if the county needs it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Craft.
Yes, I visited all of our schools this month, finished up today because I've been on vacation in New England. But I was invited to sit in on the 7th grade level, grade, 7th grade, grade-level meeting at Moyoc Middle, and I appreciate them offering that or extending that invitation to me. I attended a JV soccer game at Currituck County High School, and I just loved all the Halloween-inspired door decorations at Central and Griggs. They were all inspired by favorite books. And again, I agree with Dr. Dobney that throughout the days going in and out of the schools, there's quality education, the kids are actively engaged, and we're just so appreciative to our teachers for all the hard work they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peters?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate again Ms. Missy Swain. She was named the North Carolina Center for Advancement of Teaching Teacher of the Year. So, I think that was a big accomplishment. They even had, I love it when our high school band does a parade through the school, it's really neat, when they post that, that's really neat. So, congratulations to her. I did go around today and visit Moyoc, or started at Knott's Island Elementary, and as I will reiterate, I had a kindergarten student read me a little book. They had great things going on. They, the 3rd grade class was engaged, they were all actually reading, going back and forth, and there was lots of great interaction going. And then I toured Moyoc Elementary and Moyoc Middle. As our presentation showed, the progress is really, is really great, and it's happening, and I think everyone there is excited. I know everyone involved, and especially at Moyoc Elementary, is working hard to adjust, and we talked about it today, the kids are resilient, they're just doing what they're doing, and they know that they'll see this great, and they'll have all this great, big new stuff, so that was great. As our student board members said in their speeches, there is lots of fun stuff going on in our schools, fall festivals. I think everyone's happy to have these back in full gear. I encourage everyone, I know some of them are still looking for volunteers, so if you can, you know, maybe give some time, that's a big help. So, thank you to all the PTA and PTOs for all you do and to support. And I think we talked about it during our work session, October is Principal Appreciation along with Bosses' Day, so thank you to all of our principals, and I just hope everyone, all the kids have a safe and happy Halloween.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Ms. Rose?
Well, I have been able to visit many of the schools too, and I've been pleased with all of the good things I'm seeing that's going on in their schools. On April 2nd, I believe, was School Custodian Day, so I'd like to give a shout-out to our custodians. No matter which school I visit, I'm always impressed with the cleanliness of the school and echo Ms. Peters on the principals. This month, the principal recognition month, they do a great job. They work hard, they wear many hats. Also, congratulations to Missy Swain, we're very proud of her, NCAT, CTE Teacher of the Year, first one, first Teacher of the Year for NCAT for CTE, and she comes from Currituck, so we're mighty proud of her. I'm looking forward Friday night to serving, helping to serve our football players. We're providing the meals, those of us on the board. And I just, oh, I did have the opportunity this week, I like volunteering the schools with a reading buddy. So, I have my new reading buddy, had a chance to meet him this week at Moyoc Elementary. If you do not have children, but you would still like to volunteer, our schools are always looking for volunteers just to lend a pair of ears to listen to a child read. So, think about doing that, please. We mentioned earlier, oh, a month or two ago, recognizing a couple of former board members, so I wanted to make sure we haven't forgotten that.
We have not.
Okay.
We're still working on it.
We're working on it, okay. And scores, you know, ever since they were released by the state, I guess, after September, of course, you know, we all know, we've been through a lot with COVID. We know that we had children who were out of school from March and October, March until January, March until, March until December, I believe, 2022.
We had some kids that were out of school from March of 2020 and did not step foot in school again until August of '21.
Because they chose to stay virtual.
Yes.
So, some will say that had no effect, but, you know, I really quite a bit. And just this week, I've come across a couple of articles. One is the ACT scores that students take to go to college. They have plunged to the lowest level since 1991.
Oh, wow.
And another commentary that closing schools should be the last option in a pandemic. I think we all knew our kids were going to suffer, not just academically, but socially and mentally. And I'm very happy that in the midst of COVID, our administrative team came up with a strategic plan, which we are in the second year. I know our administrators with Miss Kristi Hodges and Ray Dowdy are working hard, and, you know, I'd like to encourage the public to go to our website, look at the strategic plan, and see the timeline. You know, we have been moving forward with accreditation. We are working hard to help our children gain much of what they lost, whether it be from online learning, just worried about the pandemic, so many factors played into that. But I want to thank everybody that's working to get our kids back up to where we need to be. Now, I don't think any of us will be pleased with the scores, but we are doing our best to get back to safety.
That's right.
Well, some of the scores that are being, you know, battered around back and forth and that, are just the level 4 and 5 scores, which are the, what, college and career-ready scores, and don't include, you know, the level 3 scores, which are proficient.
Yeah, there is a lot of information floating around the county that is piecemeal.
Yes.
Please, just do your own research.
Do your own research and check it out for yourself. Ask questions. If you don't know the answer, call one of us, and we'll get you the answers that you need in order to make an informative decision. Thank you, Ms. Rose, that was some really valid information, I appreciate that. Dr. Lutz?
Thank you. Ms. Craft, what a great message to serve me, thank you, much needed. We had a standing meeting, a gathering with Senator Hanning, Representative O'Neill, Jack Bagwell, the president of COA, along with several county commissioners and Ms. Etheridge, to talk about how we can continue to support our students as they transition into career. And, you know, that falls in line with the resolution this board passed previously regarding a college career track and a second diploma, and we are coming together to have these discussions, and they've been going on for six years. What's most encouraging about the most recent meeting is we scheduled the next one already in November, and that's when things start to happen. We have the right people at the table having a great discussion, and I can't wait to get back and continue to move this work forward.
And they primarily focused on vocational education, right?
That's correct.
How did this meeting, how did we finally get to the table?
Paul O'Neill reached out and gathered this group together. I think he was a board trustee member at COA for, I believe, over 20 years, and he got a lot of, he got the right people to the table to have the right discussion.
I think we need to make it clear that we're not talking about building a new vocational school immediately, we're talking about the diploma track being such that every student doesn't have to have a college diploma track, but they can have a vocation that they can start working almost immediately.
Which goes along with our, what we're striving for all of our graduates to do, to enroll, enlist, or employ, and it's not one size for itself.
Right, right.
And because we've noticed with all this debt, college debt forgiveness, a lot of kids are not doing the college route anymore. So, we do need to prepare our students for different paths, every, they're all different.
We need diplomas, electricians, AICAC people, and goodness gracious, we certainly need people to enlist. We need our service members.
Yes, we do.
The concept of enroll, enlist, employ also came out of our strategic plan, where we collected over 7,000 data points and had over 400 stakeholders involved in that process. And so, we're able, we're not guessing what our target is, we're not wondering, what are we going to do to improve? We have a plan, it's in action, and we constantly are monitoring and revising. I have a couple other comments?
Sure.
All right. We have a lot of directors here tonight in support work, I appreciate you all being here this evening. It is Principals Month as well, as one of the toughest jobs in education, is they are asked to please a lot of people, and they're stuck in the middle sometimes. We had an incredible effort from transportation here the past few days, where we have brought out every bus driver that has a license, including our CTE teacher. For the state, drove a bus this morning, I think that's a testament to the culture that we're building and Jim's work, but also just the willingness for people to do what they can to make, get our kids to school and be a great place to learn. Wanted to update everyone on accreditation. With the accreditation process unavailable through the state, so the state has reached out to us, and they are no longer participating right now in accreditation, they have confirmed that. We are going to move forward with accreditation. Did a little research in the area, in the northeast region, there's over 80 schools in our region, more than half are accredited. I do want to say that of that half that are accredited, predominantly are Cs, Ds, and Fs, but that's not driving us to get accreditation. We believe our district delivers a high-quality education daily, and through our strategic plan, and that's his year two of him, we mentioned it directly in there, we will continue to see further accountability and growth. We also understand that accreditation serves as additional evidence of the exceptional education accessible here in Currituck County. Again, we've identified it and included in our strategic plan, and I wanted to assure our board and our citizens that our district's goal of accreditation remains an integral part of our plan and soon-to-be-realized accomplishment.
And you mentioned accreditation, but that's a part of our strategic plan. I failed to mention, this plan was implemented in 2021, and it is a five-year plan. So, accreditation is not something new that we've just come up with overnight. You know, it's, it's in the plan to, when we want the Currituck County High School accredited, and we're moving forward with that.
That's right.
You had two meetings recently. Did you have, you met with the state?
Yeah, we met with the state, and then they have finally confirmed that they are out of the business of accreditation. We have met with Cognia, and we are working on a contract with them.
And Dr. Lutz, when you mentioned those, a lot of those schools had a CD or F, that's referring to the state report card.
State report card.
That gives, right, but, and that grade is what kind of they grade our schools. And it's kind of one of those things I think people look at, because it's easy. We all know A to, you know, A, B, C, or D, what it means generally. So I just wanted to clarify that that's what you're, the state report card.
And while we were not pleased with their scores, and certainly see room for improvement, we did have one school that exceeded growth.
We had two schools.
Two schools that exceeded growth, and only one that was.
One school that did not meet growth, but they were a few buildings.
Okay. So we did, we are not a low-performing district. There are others in the area, but so we're, I don't want our teachers to say we don't appreciate you. We do, we know you're working hard, but we do want to get back up to where we need to be.
Yeah.
And in our presentation, we didn't get any type of handicap for COVID. Right, we had, just want to reiterate that. It's not like, well, you, you received this, these scores, but we'll factor in that you were out, some of your students were out, like you said, for over a year. So you have to, you know, as a parent, you have to take that in consideration.
And we had to give them the choice.
Yeah, stay, stay behind that, yeah.
Half, about approximately half of our secondary students stayed home. And then at the elementary level, we had over 20% stay home throughout.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the whole state, we went from, what, 400 low-performing schools to 800 low-performing schools in the state.
Over 400, over 800.
Yeah.
Eight, eight low-performing districts to 29.
And it's, it's just, it's not countywide, it's, it's not statewide, it's nationwide. Everybody's in the same boat because of the pandemic. So I just want the public to know that it's, it's not just here locally. It is nationwide, worldwide, probably.
And it does have an effect on our students. And I see Mr. Griffin, one of our stellar ACT teachers sitting back there, who, you know, I, I know from the get-go, he wanted his kids in the classroom. And Mr. Griffin, I'm sure you can attest that you feel like your, your children do better in the classroom versus online.
All right. And I'm glad I vote that this board is active and involved in our schools. You see the work that's going on. I know that we are out watching our schools, viewing our schools, getting eyesseeing what's going on, and our teachers are teaching. And that is, that is what makes the difference to our students, and is, it is greatly appreciated. On one last note, it is Rest In Our Awareness Month, and I think we all know people, including myself, that have been touched by this awful disease.
Yes.
And continue to support the awareness and do what we can to crush this disease.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, hats off to all of our principals throughout the county. You continue to amaze us with everything that you do. We're very proud of you. And Missy Swain, what an honor. My hats off to her, too. What an honor for, for Currituck and for her. As many of you know, I will not be seeking a fourth term on the Board of Education. I will be retiring from the Board of Education in December. All I can say is that I've always tried to do my best and be honest and truthful in every way possible. Well, it's an election year, and some of the candidates are campaigning hard to spread false information and discredit our school system and all of the wonderful programs that we have to offer. We live in a wonderful place, and good things are happening. I want to set the record straight concerning accreditation is one of them. We've touched on it, but I'll reiterate. We have and will continue to work on having our schools nationally accredited. This process should take eight to nine months approximately. Touching on the joint meeting that we had, that Paul O'Neill, he is the one who got everyone together. We've been talking about this for several years, but we would talk about it in, in meetings, maybe with the board or maybe with the commissioners, but he went a step above that. He took the initiative to reach out to commissioners, Board of Education members, COA president, Bobby Hannig was there, and it was a positive meeting concerning the other track for graduation for the CTE track. And we're meeting again in a couple weeks, and I'm looking forward to, to moving forward with that initiative. In closing, I ask that each and every one of you take, take time to really do your research, be informed. If you're going to vote, be informed. Do your research, reach, reach out to us, pick up the phone, text us. We're available on the candidates that are running for school board. This is a very important election, and you want the people that are representing you as Currituck County citizens to have your children's best interest at heart. You don't want anyone that has other motives. We want people that are elected to this position to have our kids' best interest at heart. If we can do that, you've, you've got some really good board members. I'll get off my soapbox now, and I hope everyone's enjoying the fall climate and fall festivities at all the schools. If you go on our school website, you'll see that there's numerous functions to attend, get the families, get the families out, have them enjoy the festivities as much as possible. I've been to some of the football games and visited a few of the schools this month, and really some good things are happening. Our students are happy, our teachers are happy, and that's really what it boils down to. That's what's most important. They're engaged, they're learning, and that's what we want. We want them to stay in school and, and be happy with, with their progress, and, and they are making progress at this point. Yes, we had a stumbling block, you know, about 18 months, and everybody, we had never had this happen before, so of course we were behind. Everybody's behind, but we're going to catch up, and we've got great people in place, and they're doing just that. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
One more announcement. The Currituck County High School teenager department will be putting on the play Ernest this weekend, I believe, in the Buddy White Auditorium. The importance of being Ernest.
The importance.
The importance of being Ernest. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen. So I already have my tickets, I hope you'll get your tickets, too.
Thank you. Y'all drive safe going home. Thank you for being here.